All rise. Hear ye, hear ye.
Sorry.
Hamlin County Commission Meeting is now in session. Honorable Howard Chipley for his identity, please remain steady.
We want to call the regular Hamlin County Monthly Meeting Thursday, May the 20th, 2021, to order at this time, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Huntsman to lead us in our prayer, please.
If you have to do so. Our heavenly Father, we're so thankful to be able to come and hear what's going on, and we ask you to be with us today, protect our Hamlin County, protect our commissioners, guide us and direct us in everything we do, and help us, Father, to make the right decisions, and that you would honor us in doing what we're doing. Guide us and direct us. Be with our other leaders in the state and the federal. We just ask that you just guide us. We know, Father, that you're in charge of everything, and we honor you that, and we give you praise for that. Bless us now, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Huntsman. At this time, Commissioner Lawan, would you lead us in our pledge, please?
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed. I'd like to remind the commission, please put on your mics, and would you address the commission? Please speak over the mic. Let's do the roll call at this time, please.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Give her part system here.
One moment, please.
Okay. Lick him up.
She's ready.
Well, present. Come on, get it.
Fourteen present.
We do have a form present, so we're open to do business. We are honored tonight to have with us Girl Scout troop 22035 in attendance. They meet at the West Hamlin County Fire Department, and their scout leader is Lori Diamond, and I'm going to ask for them to stand at this time to be recognized. Would you please stand? Let's give you a big applause. Thank you very much. You may proceed. It's an honor to have you with us tonight. We do have some people who need to be recognized at this time, and I'm going to ask Janice Kimbrough, the Honorable Judge Snyder, Cindy Trent Doughty, and Commissioner Randy DeBord, please come to the well at this time, please, for the presentation.
Janice is not here. So Gina Kimbrough is going to accept this proclamation for her.
At this time, we'd like for Ms. Doughty and the Honorable Snyder, the ladies, to remain in the well, and we'd like for Gina Kimbrough to join them, and Commissioner Tim Horner.
And I'd like to say something about Gina, but I'll cry. I've probably worked with Gina Hawken-Hawn for twenty-five years, at least. I was magistrate at juvenile court, magistrate for sixteen years, and that was fifteen years ago, but somewhere during that time, almost thirty years ago, we all started in juvenile court together under Judge Snyder. And I watched Gina grow from secretary who just answered the phone to the most amazing truancy court leader that you could ever imagine. When I started juvenile court seven years ago, I had the idea that we needed to start a truancy court program to benefit the kids that were burnt from school and keep those cases from coming to court to solve those problems before they ever had to come to court. And I mentioned that to Cindy and to Gina, and we were going to get together and come up with a plan, and about three weeks later, they came to me, and they played labor plan, all ideas, fully written, fully operational, and Gina has run with this ever since, and all of you, why don't you all say that, too? These are our graduation messages from this school system that we have worked with for the last seven years. And thanks to all of you. Thank you so much for the wonderful job you've done.
Let me just say, I've known her since I was little, but we did grow up together in church, and she is a mighty person.
She is, and we hate to leave you, but we understand you're going through a better life.
Thank you, Gina, and also we want to extend our thanks to Janice for the excellent service that they have provided our community. At this time, we're going to recess the Hamlin County Legislative Body and reconvene as the Hamlin County Beer Board. We do have an application for beer permit from Kenny's Market in Deli located on Papa Ridge Road, and at this time, if there are individuals present who would like to speak in favor of or against this beer permit, you please come to the podium at this time and state your concerns. Do we have anyone? Hearing none then, we're going to close the public comment section and reconvene as the Hamlin County Legislative Body and to consider, first of all, the beer permit, and the chair would entertain a motion. We have a motion. We grant the beer permit.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner DeBord, who seconded? Okay, Mr. Horner, or Lawan seconded the motion. Are there any questions or any discussion at this time? Hearing none then, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 3A, 11 ye, 3 nae.
The beer permit is approved. Congratulations. Okay? Next on the item is the Calendar Rules Committee Report. Chairman Tim Steph, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 5A, approval of consent calendar items, I put that in form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 5A, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 5B, approval of regular calendar items with the addition of public services, which would be 10C, I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 5B, 14 ye, 0 nae.
Okay, the motion is approved.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Steph. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Second.
Who seconded?
My own.
Commissioner Hahn? Any discussion at this time? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6A, 14 ye, 0 nae.
All right, the motion is approved. At this time, we will entertain public comments from the public regarding agenda items on. If you want to address any item that's on the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and share your comments. All right. There's no public comments at this time. We'll move on then. We'll close the public comment section and move on to item number eight. Chairman, the board of the Finance Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 8A, the approval of the monthly checks, and I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Huntsman.
Item 8A, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8B, federal year 2021, and that's for the Homeland Security Grant. I put it in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8B, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8C, bid tabulation on the rugged notebook computers for HCSO. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8C, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8D, bid tabulation on the HVAC system for Hamlin County Courthouse. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8D, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8E, bid tabulation on new commercial grade zero-turn mower for Cherokee Park. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Denise Smith, you're recognized.
What kind of mower are you going by?
A Hustler.
Hustler. Hustler.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8E, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8F, Resolution 2104, a resolution of the County Commission of Hamlin County, Tennessee, authorizing the 2021 Walmart Foundation Community Grant application for Hamlin County Sheriff's Department. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8F, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8G, Resolution 2105, a resolution of the County Commission of Hamlin County, Tennessee, authorizing the 2021 bulletproof vest grant application. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8G, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item H, item 8H, Budget Amendment, Hamlin County Board of Education, Amendment Number Seven, for $2,500, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8H, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I1, Fund 101, General Debt Service, $3,334, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I1, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I2, Fund 101, Transfer to Other Funds, for $8,450, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I2, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I3, Fund 101, Corner, for $33,000, and that's for additional autopsies. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I3, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I4, Fund 101, Chance Report, $97.83, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Fedshaw.
8I4, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I5, Fund 101, Work Release Program, for $30, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Hahn, you're recognized.
What is that for? Thirty dollars, that is.
Animal control.
In work release?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
8I5, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I6, for the jail, that's $200. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I6, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I7, Fund 101, Juvenile Courts, for $10,310. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I7, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I8, for Fund 101, Rabies Control and Animal Control, $30. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I8, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Number 8I9, Fund 101, Parks and Fair Boards, $570, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Mistake.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? Let's vote the motion, please.
8I9, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Number 8I10, for 101, Capital Projects, $45,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I10, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Number 8I11, Fund 101, Transfer to Other Funds, for $25,000. Put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I11, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I12, Fund 116, Transfers Out to Other Funds, and that's for $9,788.43, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I12, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I13, Fund 131, for Highway Department, $128,000. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8I13, 13 ye, 1 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8I14, Fund 131, for Highway Department, $15,187.81. Put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 8I14, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8J, Extension of Commercial Lease for County Clerk Satellite Office, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
How much money is that? Per year, per month, per week?
It's $2,100 a month.
$2,100 a month. State pays so much?
Well, we sublease a part of that out, truth to say. The state pays us $2,050 a month when we sublease.
They pay $2,050, and we get it for $21. We're getting real estate business, don't we?
There's still other expenses that we have to pay, like power and internet and that kind of thing, but, you know, it's a pretty deal.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8J, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8K, Satellite Office Space Sublease to the State of Tennessee, Third Amendment through June 30th of 2023, and this is for Judge Boniface's office, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Is that the $2,200? Okay.
Any other discussion? Let's vote the motion, please.
8K, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 8L, Property Lease, and I put that in the form, I'm sorry, Property Purchase, and I put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Is this the property across the street?
Yes.
That's Mr. Anderson's for $161,000?
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty. And I think the arrangement was that he gets to stay in it for three years rent-free. So is, we pay for it, $160,000, and then the man that we're buying it from gets to stay in it for three years rent-free. Why don't we look about, if he's going to stay there three years, see if we can't pay him at the end of the three years, instead of tying our money up for three years and not be able to do anything with it?
Any other discussion? If not, then let's vote the motion, please.
12 ye, 2 nae.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. The board, at this time, Chairman, the board of the Personnel Committee, you're recognized.
Item 9A, Revisions to the Employee Handbook, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please. Commissioner Neesmith, Commissioner Ward, Commissioner Neesmith. Okay, thank you.
9A, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. The board, this time, the Public Service Committee, Chairman Tim Goan, you're recognized.
Item 10, item 10A, Surplus Idols for the Community Services Work Program. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Okay, this is on the property purchase. I went up there today and looked at that property. It's up on Jackson Street and Fifth North.
Now, this is a surplus idol.
Sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'll get you next time.
Okay. I think that will be under the jail committee that you're interested in. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
8A, 14 ye, 0 nae.
The motion is approved.
Item 10B, Beer Permit Application Process. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
10B, 12 ye, 2 nae.
The motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
No, we have a surplus idol on the mode that's been added to your agenda.
I don't have it. I don't have it. Requesting approval of surplus of the following mower, a Hustler mower. Put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion.
He needs to hit a button.
It's off the board.
Something's off.
It's off the board.
Oh, that is wrong. I'm sorry. Off the board.
Off the board.
We have a second. Thomas Doughty, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, they'd be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, likewise. The motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Goan. At this time, Chairman Tim Horner of the Justice Center Jail Committee, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 11A, the property purchase, this would be the Hyde property, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you're recognized.
Sorry for that few minutes ago, but I went up there and saw this property. It's located at the corner of Jackson and Fifth North. It's property that was owned by a company that's no longer there. It's listed under R2 Residential. The house has been some, they've had some work done on it. It still needs some more work on it. It's two stories. It's got three doors. The two back doors are 31 inches. The front door's 34 inches. They're not handicap accessible. Evidently, the bedroom- The, evidently, the bedrooms are what you would use for bedrooms or whatever you're going to do, it's upstairs, there's no fire escape to it. You have to come back down at the first store to get outside. On the, the land itself, on the right-hand corner, it borders some county property that we already own. That property, uh, we can't use it for parking, for about twenty feet from the road down is a, a bank, something like that, you can't park on it. So, they're going to be high for one of these lots that's going to be like that. The other property on, down below, whether it's packed or it's concrete, is good, good property. But you're not going to be able to use all of that. If you tear it down, I don't know if you can still use all of where the houses at or not, so. I know when we built, did the Hell House, we looked at it, it's got to be handicap accessible, big doors, bathrooms. I didn't go in, I don't know if the bathrooms are handicap accessible or not, so. I think we need to take a look at it to answer some of those questions, what, if it is, what's it going to cost us to renovate it, to use it? And I think we just want to try to use it like for a halfway house, is the way I understand it. So, I know some of the, some of the requirements are going to be required, that you're going to have to have an escape route in case of fire. That's one thing they're going to get you on. And those doors are not wide enough, so if somebody's in there in a wheelchair, you can't get them in, in the place. So, you know, you're looking at some more money and spending on this thing. I think, I, I think we need to take a look at it before we just jump in there and buy it, because it's for sale.
Mayor, you want to respond to any of those concerns?
Using it for a, like a domestic violence house is one, one option that has been discussed, but there's other options as well. And if you used it for something, any congregate living like that, there's improvements that have to be made to it. That's, that's true. But there's other options as well that would not require renovation.
Any more discussion?
Bill, is there anywhere we can get some, maybe some coats to, to make it handicap accessible, if we had to do that?
We can do that, sure.
Can we do that before we vote on it?
The bathrooms are handicapped accessible on the inside.
The ba, the bathrooms are, we've seen them. Now, there would need to be, if you had congregate living in there, you would have to have, like, a fire escape from the second floor.
Could you, could you put a fire escape outside the building?
That's what, that's what it would be.
Yeah. I think what Wayne would like to know is probably how much it would cost us to make it accessible so that we wouldn't, we could use it for what we wouldn't use it for, maybe before we vote.
Any more discussion?
Depends on what you use it for.
We have a motion on the floor? We ready to vote? Let's vote a motion. Commissioner Hudson.
Are we voting for it, ma'am? Black, Brown, and Teller cost us.
Item eleven A, ten, yay, four, nine.
Okay, the motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Horner. At this time, we was entertaining public comments of the general interest. We were here tonight, we want to address the commission. On this time, please come to the podium. This time, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Chris Black, I reside in seventy-three thirty-five, and when you circle, I'll be discussing this. The House came before you asking that this commission schedule a community public forum. This be on time for our leaders to stand before their electorate and the people. As for these meetings serving as a proper venue for such opportunities to learn and ask questions, we found out in this month's committees that commissioners aren't permitted to engage in forums with citizens in this venue. Furthermore, a public forum will afford you the opportunity to defend your decisions relative to the jail project. As a bit of a belief myself, I've always found that it's much easier to move forward with an idea when I have the support of those that I'm tasked with leading. Unfortunately, at this time, you simply don't. Now, in Hamblin County, we have at least three venues capable of facilitating such a forum, two high school auditoriums, countless school gymnasiums, and a world-class laecium at Walter State. Please take this request under advisement before we, the people, decide to have a forum of our own. If that happens, rest assured that there won't be a seat one available in this courtroom moving forward. In pressing forward with my research related to the Justice Center and Jail Project, a few things stand out to me as points of concern. First of all, the architects mostly have done a number of similar projects, however, the most similar ones ours, from a design standpoint, is in Guilford County, North Carolina, a population of approximately half a million. While that project has over one thousand beds, it is apparent that from a design perspective, this is where Hamblin County's new jail gets its inspiration from. Additionally, when assessed from a purely research-based perspective, it's evident that pre-trial jail, or that pre-trial diversion initiatives have the potential to serve as our saving grace if we're serious about minimizing the jail population and recidivism prevention. And I have a number of scholarly articles supporting this article if anybody wishes to review them. Now, we've asked, time and again, that you guys go back to the drawing board, and it's not just Coag asking this, it's a wide number of people across this county, and to date, you continue to refuse. In fact, the chairman of this body said that we, as a commission, are charged to build a jail that meets the needs of Hamblin County, not Coffee County or any other county, and that's correct. And anybody, I think, with any sense would agree with it. However, the solution should not be to simply go back to what we've done before and say that that's just going to work, because. Now, there are numerous examples of what will work. In fact, there are numerous examples on most of these websites that I hope you guys will review. One being the RSW Regional Jail Facility in Front Row, Virginia. If they were to build that facility today, and it holds six hundred and seventy. It'd be right at seventy-nine million, which comes in cheaper than eighty-eight million. A cost-saving, yay for us. Now, I'd just like to know when Hamblin County become a RE/MAX affiliate, because y'all buy property like most people buy.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? You're recognized.
Bonnie Wallington, three seventeen Steubelfield Street, Whitesburg. And I would like to double down on Mr. Black's suggestion for a public forum. I think it's very much needed, and it's something that's, it's just, it's going to have to happen sooner or later. But you know, no matter how bad the problems with Taj Mahal gets, you keep insisting on building this jail the way you want it, with no regard for the taxpayers. You repeatedly insist on shoving this project down the throats of the taxpayers, even as the mechanics of this project start to crumble around you. Now, the costs to bill bids are millions of dollars over the proposed seventy-five million dollar budget, and you're scrambling for ways to cut costs, such as removing some of the pilings, a cheaper facade, and most outrageous of all, to bill the building and leave part of it unfinished, to be finished at a later date. I don't understand it, it appears there's more to this project than meets the eye, but it's hard to keep secrets, and secrets are known to come to the service, surface. And then now, I would like to talk about Nancy Phillips on the Rules Committee. A month ago, I suggested she be removed because of her spiteful and hurtful remarks about the taxpayers. While Nancy told Darrell Larwood that Mayor Britton had called her and asked her to sit on the Rules Committee. But now, I'm hearing that the mayor told someone that she was Chairman Shipley's pick, and he was the one wanting her on the Rules Committee. Regardless who chose her, she should have been removed from the committee for making the remarks she made, and then trying to lie out of it when the proof was before her. It's also my understanding that the General Sessions judge she worked for asked her either to resign or be fired. Clearly, Nancy Phillips is not someone who should be on the Rules Committee, and the lack of action by this commission shows just how little you think of the taxpayers. And speaking of the Rules Committee, where does it stand? The last meeting was March, and not a word since. Will there even be another meeting? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Darrell Larwood, Darrell Larwood. No point record, it's back in it, what Mr. Black you said, we do need a public forum. According to y'all, the majority of people support what you're doing, and we're just this little fringe group of dissatisfied people screaming for attention. Well, if that's the case, back it up. Put it in a forum, find out for yourself. No, we're not the little group out here, we are the majority, and we don't want what you're doing, because you're putting us in the poorhouse, and we're tired of it. And if you won't listen to us in here, you won't let us have a public forum, you won't have a referendum, you turn that down because you know that you'd get voted down for what you want, because the people don't want it. But y'all are going to push forward with it. Second thing, I noticed sitting here, under the Finance Committee, number eight, on section I, went down through all those items. We have three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand, twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, fifteen thousand, and one question got asked on thirty dollars. It ain't no wonder we're broke, when y'all will sit up here and just approve hundreds of thousands of dollars, and you ask the question on thirty dollars. And we wonder why we're broken, we're getting taxed into the poorhouse.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
I want to, um, ask for the public forum as well.
You want to state your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Ann Horner, fifteen thirty-five Panther Creek Road. As you all know, um, we need this public forum. Unless you all have just forgotten the Constitution, we have a right to have, you all are our voices. You're supposed to be, that's your job. But you do what you think is best. I'm sorry, I don't believe that you've had all these phone calls, the people in support of this jail.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
My name is London Oe, twenty-three forty-three Joe Stevens Road. I'd like to go back over the Burwell update that you hopefully heard and listened to on May tenth at your committee meeting. These are just some of the things he said. Uh, we looked at changing the precast. I, Tony Pettit, heard it was very expensive precast. Your structure is clad in precast, you also have precast steps, a lot of decorations. Is there another way of getting this look? The millwork, I think you could save money on millwork. And opening up the specs for other elevator guys, remember that one. Opening up the specs for other elevator guys. I'd like to look, and I'm using Tony's words and paraphrasing, I'd like to look at a different detention system instead of these steel prefab cells. There is a product out there, a site-built steel detention system. Now, back to the site, I think we need to look at micro piles. Engineers said we needed sixty-five-foot-deep piles. I've met with geotech engineers and geotech contractors, they've said you could save one-point-five million just by bidding the correct length of piles. Then you wouldn't have to buy casing for sixty-five-foot-deep pilings when it's only fifty-foot-deep. Then Tony talked about the elevator again. He said that there are at least three good elevator companies, and really, four or five or more. But only one was allowed to bid. Why? He tells you, because there was one written specification that only one bidder could meet. In other words, Mosley designed it, knowing that only one bidder would be able to bid on the elevator. Tony even says, and he knew he was the only one who could bid. Then Tony said, so he, the elevator company, bid nine hundred thousand when it was a six hundred thousand dollar elevator. And then Tony said, I had estimated it, Tony, at three hundred and eighty thousand. When you let somebody design something, and they design it where there's only one bidder that can meet the specs, that's almost getting very close to collusion or bid rigging. That person knows it, and the designer knows it. And evidently, Tony, at some point, knew it. I don't know if it was before or after, probably before.
Thank you for your comments.
No, I'm not through.
Well.
Okay. It's the entire design that is flawed.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Wendell and Holden, eighty-one fifty West Point Drive. I'm for a public forum. I'm a taxpayer, and I don't like the way y'all spend my money, and I don't like the way you do your business. You were voted in by your constituents to work for your constituents, but you're not doing that. I can see it with my own eyes. Not only me, but other people out here too in Hamblin County. And I've lived here all my life, and worked all my life, and I don't appreciate what y'all are doing. I don't. So, please have the public forum, so people can speak up, and let, and let, and the people let you all know how they really feel. Please.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Yes, ma'am.
Emily Rightnower, twelve hundred West Sixth North Street, Morristown, um, near the new jail site. I want to say first, I actually think it's a great site for the jail. I fully support it, and I support buying the house. We have a jail problem, as you all know. Our first response to our jail problem should be to reduce the jail population instead of building a new jail. We do need a new jail. But jail is a cage for human beings, we can't forget that. People don't get better in jail, they get worse. And the people we are sending to jail are the wrong people, the people who need help, not the people who are a danger to our community. There are many options for reducing our jail population. We can cite and release nonviolent offenders instead of arresting them and taking them to jail. And we can also, um, I sent most of you all an email about this today, we could use a model that they're using in Minnesota called the Yellow Line Project. Some of you said that the video that I sent about it didn't have enough information, and I understand that it was sparse. But the gist of it is, you have a pre-trial services officer who screens everyone who comes to, who is arrested before booking into jail for a mental disability or an addiction, and if they have a mental disability or an addiction, that pre-trial services officer will connect them to Human Services, which is not happening right now. We have lots of services to help people, but they're not getting connected to the people who need them. This would also keep people who are not a threat to our community, who need help, out of jail. I would love to hear from you about these ideas. I would love to have conversations and answer all of your questions as far as I can. I'm still learning too, I'm certainly not an expert. I'm just a concerned citizen. But also, the onus should not be on concerned citizens to do all the research and figure it all out. You are our leaders, we need you to lead. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? If not, then I want to remind you of the announcements, you've got those here, uh, in your notebook. We have several budget hearings coming up, so don't forget that, two next week, uh, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-seventh, five P M., and then several here in the month of June. So, uh... week, the 25th and the 27th, 5:00 PM, and then several here in the month of June. So, please take note of those announcements and put them on your account. We would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a motion? Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved.